Whatever you want.
Okay, um, good evening. Welcome to our February twenty second, twenty twenty one Lackawanna City Council meeting. Like to welcome all the department heads as well as the public. Uh, before we begin our caucus, I would ask all rise and uh, recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance into the flag.
United States of America.
The justice.
Thank you. All right, reviewing uh, tonight's agenda. The first items are um, administrative. Mr. City Clerk, any hearings from citizens?
We did not get anything from any citizens uh, to date.
Thank you. So items uh, one through six are administrative. We can deal with those. Uh, communication from the mayor, item seven, requesting the March first meeting be moved to four o'clock to allow for a live presentation of the state of the city address. Uh, any members of the council wish to comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. Council President, I spoke to the mayor about this. I'm gonna vote no, not because I'm against what she's trying to do. Uh, it's just that I work and uh, if I get caught being at two governments at one time, the uh, uh, the watchdogs will be all over me. So I will graciously vote no. She knows this. This is not a negative attack towards anything. Just simply, I cannot be uh, at two places at the same time under two different uh, opportunities.
Councilman uh, Simansky, thanks for sharing that with us. Uh, we, most of us thought that that might be a conflict for you. Um, but we'll note your, your absence in anticipation next week uh, or employment.
I will be joining at fourth, I'll be joining the meeting at four thirty-one PM Eastern Standard Time.
Okay, well, that might be uh, it might still be going on.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, and anyone else? All right, um, item number eight, from the Director of Recreation regarding advertising for mowing and landscaping bids. Um, the director uh, wish to say anything regarding that, right? Any?
Your mic's off, Brian.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, just standard procedure, uh, it's an annual procedure. We just gotta get the uh, bids out so that the public can uh, be aware that the uh, bid opportunities are out there.
Uh, thank you, Director.
Can I chime, can I chime in, Mr. Council President? There's a sidebar, there's a sidebar here. Uh, as we all know, we do our legal advertising, uh, bids included through the front page. Uh, I'm gonna defer this to Chuck Clark here. Uh, we have had an issue with the front page. They've not responded to any communications, have not issued a newspaper. Uh, they are our official newspaper. So uh, if we do not have this venue to advertise for bids, we're gonna have to find something else. Chuck, do you have an update on that?
Your mic isn't on, Chuck.
Sorry, guys. Thank you. Um, I did reach out to the parent company that owns the front page. Uh, they have yet to respond back to me. Um, I'm sure this is stating the obvious for most of you, but they have not issued in addition in the last two weeks. Uh, the local manager of the paper, who's normally super responsive, has not responded to any phone calls, text messages, or voicemails. So as soon as I get an update, I will let you know. Um, I was able to connect this morning uh, with a, a, a parent, not a parent company, a uh, secondary company uh, of the uh, parent, and they uh, were doing their best to connect me through that angle as well. So, but as right, as of right now, nothing.
Now Chuck, I have a question for you. Um, I always like to look forward to a backup plan. When uh, I was mayor, we looked at um, the Penny Saver, the government said no. Uh, and then they went out of business anyway, as far as I understand it. Um, is there any, or can we do some research into whether the state has authorized some form of alternative? Cause print newspapers are going away the dodo. Is there a way that we can do this digitally? Do we still have to have an official newspaper? Cause if we go to Buffalo News, that's gonna be very, very costly.
Incredibly costly.
There are B newspapers we can utilize, but can we look into an alternative if they're, if they're, say, closed up for shop?
Certainly, uh, yes, I will, Jeff. I'll look into that and uh, uh, report back through uh, uh, Mr. De Pescuallay.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Savali, uh, City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney, you, are you aware of this problem?
Um, I've just become aware, but I could look up the procedure for us and see if the state allows any other kind of publication.
Yeah, we probably need some direction on that right away. I don't know if our city clerk has any um, insights into this.
I would recommend, I would recommend NICOM. Uh, they're pretty on top of uh, up to date stuff.
Yeah, they'll, they'll definitely be a resource that we contact. Uh, but my concern is um, is not only the fact that the charter calls for a city newspaper, but, or an official newspaper, but you know, when we're doing bids with, with uh, federal funding, state funding, uh, CDBG, stuff of that nature, there are certain requirements that are in place regarding advertising. And um, if we don't meet those, we become ineligible for grants. So um, this, this, we gotta get on this because uh, we've got stuff that's, that's coming due that we have to be able to advertise somewhere and.
We still could, could we still use the Criterion?
We, we can. There, there are about twice, if not three times as much as the front page. I understand money's not the sole object that we do have to get advertising out there, but um, I guess the, i, i, referring to Tony Savaglio or Rick Judah, we definitely have to uh, research this to see what would be an acceptable venue uh, that we can all live with that doesn't break the bank, I guess. Um, or if there's, if, if, if us doing it on uh, our website is sufficient in and of itself, because when the charter was written, of course, there was no website. So maybe that would suffice. I don't know, but if we could get a word on that, um, Tony or Chuck, that would be good.
I'll look into it.
How, how soon?
I'll look into it tomorrow.
You'll give us an answer tomorrow?
I hope so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll look into some other print options. If, if the answer comes back that print is our um, only op, option, uh, I'll come back with some uh, alternatives that we can consider.
I, I also might recommend this one. If we find out that this newspaper is just officially defunct, between information that Chuck collects and the city attorneys collect and the city clerk collects, um, I mean, if we have to nominate the Hamburg Bee or the West Seneca Bee, or the Hamburg Sun, uh, find out what the costs are to advertise. I, I, the crit, the only reason I mentioned Criterion City Clerk is because that's where I, as everyone knows, that we have to publish if we're doing uh, like federal bids and you know, state contract bids, it has to go through that paper. Uh, it is more expensive. They also know that they have to go through that newspaper. So alternatives is what we have to look up for if this newspaper is done for, so.
Okay, anyone else?
Thanks, Jeff. Understood.
Yep.
All right, number nine, City Assessor. Um, sending us an updated uh, copy of city-owned real estate that I believe would be appropriate for sale. Any comments on that? Number ten, City Controller. Um, requests the uh, attached ordinance regarding FEMA reimbursement. I would ask our City Controller, Carolyn Nicometto. Carolyn, anything you wanna shed? Any like you wanna shed on that one?
Uh, no, I just know that Jim Fino worked very diligently with Connie Minor, our grant writer, uh, to, to get this money requested from FEMA. I'm not sure how long it'll take, but this is what we know. This is very close to what we'll, we will be getting on the conservative side.
We haven't received those funds yet, is that right?
No, no, we have not. But we still need to account for it in our budget. So on my record, my, on my end, uh, we need to account for the money that will be coming in.
Well, do we have to fund that uh, deficiency?
Um, we already have.
Okay, so it's, it's just a reimbursement to our general fund?
Correct.
I see. Uh, anyone else have any comments on that? Uh, number eleven, again from our City Controller, uh, informing us that Officer Katusa, Anthony R. Katusa, has retired as of January twenty ninth of this year. And I'm sure all of us wish to uh, convey to Officer Katusa our appreciation for his years of service, him and his family, all uh, service-related uh, individuals. And um, we wish him Godspeed in that respect. Anyone else wish to comment?
I wanna say it's been a pleasure working with him. Uh, he's done a tremendous job for his twenty, I believe his twenty-four years of service serving our city. Um, being a police officer is no easy task whatsoever, and uh, he's always risen to the occasion. And I just wish him all the best in the next chapter, obviously in his final chapter, but the next chapter of his life. Uh, it's well earned, and I hope he gets to enjoy it.
Uh, thank you.
I second that.
Congratulations, Tony.
Yeah, and, and just on that same note, um, Officer Katusa had, had a very special personality and demeanor when he was on the job. And he helped intervene and diffuse many, many uh, situations that could have been, uh, could have gone in another direction. But thanks to his personality and his dedication and professionalism, uh, he was a great asset and still is a great asset to our community and to the police department. So Tony, thank you very much for your service. Uh, item number twelve, um, again, our City Controller, uh, informs us that our, our count, uh, clerk type is Leslie Palczewski, uh, retired. And likewise to Leslie, we wish her Godspeed and thank you for so many years of service. Anyone else wish to comment uh, regarding Leslie's retirement?
I do as well. Once again, while I was mayor, we had the very, we had a long string of uh, surgeries and people going out for uh, medical situations. Because of Leslie's vast background within almost all aspects of our city, one by one, she sat in and filled in the positions and kept City Hall moving, whether it's in the Controller's office, the Assessor's office, recreation near the end. Uh, with, I tell you, without her abilities and her expertise, I honestly, I didn't know what else, who else to turn to. Uh, she really saved uh, my skin, uh, and whatever little hair I had left, because I would have pulled that out too. But she really was spectacular and I really, once again, she, I wish her all the best, bouncing her grandkid off her knee, and uh, thank her all so much for all the work that she did for our city for all those years.
Uh, thank you for pointing that out, Councilman Simansky. Much appreciated.
If I may, uh, Mr. President, I just also wanted to extend my congratulations to Leslie. Uh, she was uh, in the position in the Recreation Department when I took over that department, and her assistance was invaluable. She made my job. E- every day that she was there, my job was easier because of her being there. Very hard worker, very dedicated. Uh, when COVID came, uh, as uh, Councilman Simansky noted, her versatility really came into play, being able to go up into the Controller's office. And she was a real asset to City Hall, and she'll be greatly missed.
Thank you, Director Laxo. All right, um, moving on to item thirteen, City Controller, uh, requesting approval of the ordinance transferring funds for the newly negotiated police contract. Um, our City Controller, Carolyn, anything you wish to add on that for, more so for the public's uh, education?
The, uh, but the budget adjustments are necessary to account for all the back pay. Uh, the current budget just reflects the, their pay at the old contract rate. So this or, what this ordinance does is it corrects the old budget ordinance to bring it up to date, to account for the back pay and for the pay to the end of the year, or our fiscal year, which would be seven thirty-one.
Thank you. Those funds come from what account?
Uh, some comes from the general fund, some comes from an employee benefit reserve that was set up for uh, retirements, uh, because some of this back pay goes to the retired police officers. Uh, fund balance and some of it was, was uh, set up in um, in our accrual account. So it, what you see here isn't entirely everything, but it's the bulk of it.
I, I noticed in your proposed ordinance, you have like uh, add five hundred thousand, add twelve thousand, add five thousand, and then you go to appropriate forty thousand, appropriate six hundred thousand approximately. Uh, what's the difference between the word add and the word appropriate in, in the accounting instance?
So we're, we're adding to the, okay, so where it says add, it means we are take, we're adding to the budget code. So we're increasing the budget line. Um, and then we're decreasing the budget line for the paid holiday line. Now, when you go to the fund balance and the benefit reserve, we say appropriate, it's, it's basically saying taking away. I could have said decrease, but we're, we're uh, taking it away.
Okay, thanks so much, Carolyn. Appreciate the clarification. Uh, any other questions for Carolyn on this issue? Very good. Item fourteen, again, from our City Controller, uh, request approval attached budget transfers regarding fiscal year ended July thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Carolyn, um, most people would ask why now, if this was an, an item from twenty eighteen?
Okay, so actually it, uh, it was an error in my, my letter that had gone down to Jeff. Sorry, Jeff. Um, I had caught it once I reviewed, uh, on Sunday. Um, I did catch it. It's really from twenty twenty. So that was, that was my mistake.
Okay. Uh, anyone have any questions or comments on that item?
If I could just, Carolyn called me on that. I feel kinda bad. I, I, I meant to change that before we got to this point, so it wasn't.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't. No, you didn't.
No, I did. I feel bad, Carolyn. My apologies, but uh, it's, it's fixed nonetheless.
Okay.
I actually.
She waited for me to leave office. That's what happened.
What's that, sir?
She waited for me to leave office, and yet I'm still here.
Yeah.
All right, item number fifteen, um, forwarding of the Lackawanna audited financial statements for fiscal year ending July thirty-first, twenty eighteen. No, I'm sorry, twenty.
Funny.
Any comments? Carolyn, thank you. It was a good report, and uh, thank you for, and your staff for your efforts and, and keeping everything uh, tidy and, and above board, uh, as far as our auditing is concerned. Thank you.
If I could jump in here, Mr. Council President, just typically with the audit, there's a notice that's attached that says the audit is available in the clerk's office for City Council and which you will receive the copy and public perusal. So uh, to the public, if you're interested in reviewing the city audit, uh, just make an appointment, come to the clerk's office, and we can make it available to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Item sixteen, I'm sorry.
Can I just add, um, I think uh, the, the audit may be already up on the, uh, on the website. So if you go under co, controller, uh, you will see the, the budgets and prior current budgets, and then all the audited financials there.
Great, thank you. Item sixteen, City Attorney requests a attached resolution associated with the stop DWI uh, program. Mr. Savali, or anything you wanna add on that? We do this year.
Really good. I would, not know.
Any comments by the council? Anyone else?
Just standard procedure.
Yeah. Item seventeen, Director Development has a series of requests, uh, that test resolution assigning an address um, for properties owned by North Fisher Properties LLC. Uh, and it's somewhat unique, and it's, it's going to be a number four in one half South Fisher Road. Uh, Director Stanton, you always call off this unique stuff.
I just couldn't find any even numbers between four and six. I looked, I couldn't find it.
There you go.
There, there is actually a precedent. There is actually an address on Electric Avenue that is a half of a address. And I only knew that because when I was being a, a numerator for the US Census, they never answered the door. So uh, so I had to go there like ten times. So there is a, you know, like fifty and a half. It does exist, just not too often, and you know, just um, it's, it's been done before.
Yeah, thank you.
It's crazy.
Anyone else?
Mr. Stanton, is that the new building they're building behind those two, two apartments back there?
Exact, exactly. Yes, yes.
That's the uh, garage and the store you're building back there?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number eighteen, again Director Development, our request, uh, council authorize marital until a final agreement regarding the uh, engineering service and design for the anticipated playground, splash pad, et cetera, at five sixty Ridge Road. Director, anything you wanna add on that, or any questions from the council or other members?
I just wanna applaud the mayor. I know this was big on her agenda when she ran for office, and uh, it's, you know, everyone expects me to run for mayor. You get this magic wand to just make things happen overnight, and it doesn't happen. So she never gave up, and uh, she, this was something she was, that's on work and getting done, and it's getting done. So comments to the mayor, comments to Recreation Director, and our comments to uh, um, our Director of Development. So job well around, well done.
Well said. Anyone else? Number nineteen, Director of Development requests, uh, City Council review attached proposed changes to section two thirty dash seventeen, the city code pertaining to Bethlehem redevelopment area. Um, Director Stanton, anything you wanna add on that? I believe you're just looking for a, a public hearing date?
That's what I'm looking for right now, and these are for your review and comment, and the public comment, that we can make whatever changes want. But I need to have a public hearing on it. I can highlight what the change could like.
Rich, I have a question. Uh, next meeting, can you have at least one tool on your pegboard behind you?
It'll be, there'll be something. I'll put a tool up there while we're waiting.
Just a hammer or screwdriver or something, alright.
It'll be there in a couple of seconds.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, number nineteen, Director Development. No, it's right there. We just went through there. All right, business registrations, Lisa Guero, EBA ladies and gents here. Um, second one is Giovanni Cooley, EBA remedy hair salon, twelve fifty-four Ridge Road, the uh, prior was fifteen seventy-two Abbott Road. And um, entertainment license requests, class one from Curly's Grill, six four seven Ridge Road, and class two license from the courthouse, two eight four seven, South Park Avenue. I believe all the appropriate um, inspections, uh, past muster were attached to the documents that we were given. Um, anyone have any comments on any of those?
Uh, I do, I do, uh, Mr. Council President, just, just on the, uh, going back to your business registrations, uh, we cannot take those together. We typically don't. Just so you know, uh, we usually uh, approve them separately. But we must in this case, because the second one, uh, Seeavon Cooley, uh, for the hair salon at twelve fifty-four Ridge Road, that's going before the Planning and Development Board. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Stanton?
Can I talk? I mean, I'll come for me. I'll call you back.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I missed that, Jeff. I'm very sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, it's just, uh, the business registration for the uh, hair salon at twelve fifty-four Ridge, that's before the Planning and Development Board, I believe. You know anything about that?
If it is, we have a meeting on Wednesday. I just don't have the agenda for that one.
So basically, you guys can approve it, but it won't actually be officially given the green light until it goes through planning and development, just so everybody knows that.
So the approval will be subject to the, to the planning boards, uh?
Correct, and that's what I, I gave you on your, your master sheet, uh, for the, for the main meeting.
Yes.
It's gotta go, it's gotta go through there, just so everybody knows that.
Great, thanks for pointing that out. Uh, any questions on that, Don?
I don't think it's on the agenda. I got the agenda here.
No, but it's on the sheet that I sent you this morning.
Okay. No, the agenda for the uh, planning board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm talking about. No biggie, you still gotta prove it.
Right, and it's, whenever the planning board acts on it, really is what it comes down to.
Right.
All right, in light of that, I would like to formally call to order the regular City Council meeting for the City of Lackawanna this Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Uh, for the record, we'll note that um, Director Public Safety, John Wolf, uh, has asked permission to, uh, the excuse from tonight's meeting. That was granted. Um, so, uh, Mr. City Clerk, would you take the role?
Good thing, Mr. Council President. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Roll call, Council Ingram.
Here.
Simansky.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Sirlik.
Here.
Morano.
Here.
Department Heads Law.
Here.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Controller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Public Information.
Here.
Hearing from citizens as stated during caucus, I did not receive any via email. So we skip to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February first, twenty twenty-one.
Morano moves to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of February first, twenty twenty-one, as written.
I got a motion by Morano, second by Sirlik, to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of February first, twenty twenty-one. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero, departmental reports one through six.
Morano moves to receive and file department reports one through six inclusive.
Ingram, second.
Okay, okay, so I've got a motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file departmental reports one through six. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero, communications from the mayor. Number seven, may I follow request City Council adjust the time of the March first council meeting to four PM to allow her to present the state of the city address via Zoom. Resolution attached.
Morano moves to receive and file act on resolution.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
On the question, I'm, I'm voting no, not in protest, but because uh, I have a prior obligation. I informed the mayor of this. Uh, I wish her all the best in the state of the city. Uh, but I will not be able to make the four o'clock meeting, so I will be voting no.
Uh, this is, this is just to receive and file her communication though, so um, you're gonna vote no to receiving her communication too?
Everything.
Okay. So we've got Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes, oh, no, sorry.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
He carried four to one. The resolution attached, where, uh, whereas, chapter three, section three point seven of the Charter of the City of Lackawanna provides for meeting dates, time, and location, and the City Council is desirous of complying with the City of Lackawanna Open Meetings Law of the State of New York, and that the City Council is desirous of changing the meeting time of the March first, twenty twenty-one regular meeting to four PM.
Morano moves to adopt a resolution as written.
Moretti, second.
Again, a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt resolution is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
No.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried four to one. Communication from Department Division Heads, number eight, Director of Recreation requests the City Council authorize the City Clerk to advertise for bids for lawn mowing and landscaping services for twenty twenty-one.
Morano moves to approve the request, direct to City Clerk to advertise for bids.
Second, Simansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Simansky, to approve request, direct City Clerk to advertise for bids. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number nine, City Assessor, as per chapter twelve dash seven of the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code, an updated copy of city-owned real estate is attached for City Council review.
Morano moves to receive and file.
Ingram, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Ingram, to receive and file. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number ten, City Controller, request City Council approve the attached ordinance to account for funds receivable from FEMA for the reimbursement of firefighter overtime and result of the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Morano moves to receive and file act on the ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero, the ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance adopted June ninth, two thousand twenty, by increasing account code for personal services, call-in time, and FEMA reimbursement by one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Adopt ordinance is written, Simansky.
Moretti, second.
A motion by uh, Simansky, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number eleven, City Controller advises the City Council that Police Officer Anthony R. Katusa has retired effective January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Morano moves to receive and file. Congratulations to Officer Katusa. Great appreciation for his, his efforts and service over the years. Godspeed.
Second.
Thirty-second.
A motion by Morano, second by Simansky, to receive and file. Ingram.
Yes.
Simansky.
Congratulations, Tony. Yes.
Moretti.
Uh, yes.
Sirlik.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Item number twelve, carried five zero. Item number twelve, City Controller advises the City Council that a count clerk typist, Leslie Palczewski, has retired effective January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Morano moves to receive and file likewise, uh, the City Council or Department Heads, et cetera, which, which to express our sincere appreciation of Leslie for her efforts and her service over the years, and again, Godspeed.
Second, Simansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Simansky, to receive and file. Ingram. Motion by Morano, second by Samansky to receive and file. Ingram.
Yeah.
Samansky.
Congratulations, Leslie. Yes.
Morano, or I'm sorry, Mar- uh, Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number thirteen, City Controller, request City Council approve the attached ordinance to transfer funds for the newly negotiated police contract is approved by council on November second, twenty twenty.
Morano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Moretti, second.
A motion by Morano, second by Moretti to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
That ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance adopted June ninth, two thousand twenty by increasing police budget for negotiated contract as follows, uh, at five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars for the budget code for Police Department Public Services, at twelve thousand three hundred dollars for Police Department Overtime, at five thousand dollars for Police Department Court Time, at forty-four thousand, four dollars for Police Department Differential and Contractual, decrease five hundred and sixteen dollars for Police Department Paid Holidays, appropriate forty thousand dollars of the city's employee benefit reserve account, and appropriate six hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars of the city's fund balance account.
Morano moves to adopt darkness is written.
Second, Samansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number fourteen, City Controller, request City Council approve the attached budget transfers for, for the fiscal year ended July thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Morano moves to approve request.
Ingram, second.
A motion by Morano, second by him to, to approve request as amended. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number fifteen, City Controller, attached for your review is a copy of the City of Lackawanna's audited financial statements for the fiscal year end July thirty-one, two thousand twenty.
Morano moves to receive and file with the thanks to the City Controller, Carolyn Nicometto, and her staff.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti to receive and file. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number sixteen, City Attorney, request City Council approve the attached resolution and associated stop DWI agreement between the City of Lackawanna and the County of Erie. A complete contract is available for review in the clerk's office.
See if I act on a resolution.
Morano, seconds.
A motion by Samansky, second by Morano to receive and file act on resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero, that resolution authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Lackawanna.
Adopt resolutions written.
Morano, seconds.
Motion by Samansky, second by Morano to adopt resolution is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number seventeen, Director Development, request City Council approve the attached resolution assigning love dot subplot number one four two dash two zero dash two dash nine point one, North Fisher Properties LLC as four and one half Fisher Road, so they can receive their mail.
Morano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Second, Surlick.
It's South Fisher Road.
North Fisher Properties on South Fisher Road.
That's, that's what it reads.
That's correct.
Okay.
South Fisher, yeah.
All right. So we got a motion, Morano, second by Surlick to receive and file act on resolute, uh, it's a resolution, by the way. It's not a, not an ordinance. Uh, Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
The resolution, whereas pursuant to chapter one ninety-four dash seven of the Lackawanna City Code, all changes to street addresses in the City of Lackawanna to be approved by the City Council and be it resolved that the parcel of land bearing subplot number one four two dash two zero dash nine dash two dash nine point one is hereby hereafter named and numbered to be four and one half South Fisher Road.
Morano moves to adopt resolution as written.
Second, Surlick.
Motion by Morano, second by Surlick to adopt resolution is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number eighteen, Director Development, request City Council authorize the mayor enter into final agreement with CNS companies for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for engineering services for design and installation of playgrounds, splash pad, and pump house changing facility at Memorial Field, five sixty Ridge Road.
Morano moves to approve request.
Second, Samansky.
Motion by Morano, second by Samansky to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Number nineteen, Director Development, request City Council review the attached proposed changes to section two thirty seventeen of the City of Lackawanna Code pertaining to Bethlehem redevelopment area. The BRA public hearing is required.
Morano moves to receive and file, set public hearing. Let's set it out for about four weeks. Is that correct, Director Stanton?
That would be very helpful. Yes.
Need a second.
Ingram, second.
Yeah, Ingram.
Ingram, all right. So we got a motion by Morano, second by Ingram to receive and file, uh, set public hearing. Uh, do we want to establish a date right now? And we got a calendar handy? I can get one.
We all do on our computers. Uh, okay. Um, you want, want, are you looking for one month out?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right. So that would be the last Monday, the twenty-ninth of March. We shouldn't have a council meeting. We can possibly do a twenty-second.
Twenty-second during council meeting would be ideal, I think.
You can do it at the same, it's not that time critical. If you do it at the council meeting, that's fine.
All right. That'll be before the council meeting, though, correct?
Yes, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A twenty-second then?
Right, what time do we want to set it?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Four o'clock. So you, you guys, we doing it for the twenty-second of March?
Yeah.
Well, we need to make a mandatory that everybody.
That's a special day. That's right, John. That is Councilman Ingram's special birthday.
That's right. So all you need to do.
We're gonna have a public hearing on your birthday.
Okay, so where, are, are we in agreement for March twenty-second, six thirty?
That's fine. When was John born? What time? Two thirty in the morning, we'll do it then.
All right, Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
We're still laughing, Jeff. Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Okay, it's agreed upon, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty PM, public hearing regarding the, uh, Bethlehem Steel Redevelopment Area, Bethlehem. All right, that carried five zero. Business registrations. Lisa Aguero, doing businesses, ladies and gents here, company, they do salon and barber shop work, fifteen seventy-two Abbott Road.
Morano moves to approve business registration.
Second, Samansky.
Yeah, a motion by, uh, Morano, second by Moretti to approve business registration. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. So, so by Cooley, doing business as remedy, which is a hair salon, twelve fifty-four Ridge Road. Again, approval of this will require, uh, additional approval by the Planning and Development Board whenever that's on their agenda.
Morano moves to approve business registration pending approval by the Planning and Development Board.
Second, Samansky.
A motion by Morano, second by Samansky to approve business registration pending approval of the Planning and Development Board. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Entertainment licenses, uh, we can class, uh, we'll put class one and class two together. They involve Curly's Grill, six forty-seven Ridge Road, L City Restaurant and Drinkery, thirty-one sixty-seven South Park Avenue, and the Poorhouse Sports Bar, twenty-eight forty-seven South Park Avenue.
Morano moves to approve above-listed class one and class two entertainment licenses.
Second.
A motion by Morano, second by Samansky to approve the above-listed class one and class two entertainment licenses. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Table items, we don't have any old business. Anybody?
I have, and I have some business. Uh, Judge, we were talking about, uh, creating a work session, uh, regarding the, uh, Warsaw Bridge. Uh, so hopefully we can get, get, get a half hour in to discuss that. I still believe that, uh, investing in it for a nominal thirty thousand dollars and can buy us ten years, uh, and some time to come up with a better plan would be efficient. Uh, however, uh, I'd like to have a work session with the council and with, uh, our Public Works Commissioner and our engineers and our controller and our Director of Development and everybody else who wants to participate. Uh, so is it possible? Perhaps we can also do John's special birthday extravaganza, uh, say six o'clock for a work session?
I don't see a problem with that. And just so you know, Councilman Samansky, um, our, uh, grant writer has been authorized to pursue, uh, grant funds that have been designated by the federal government for the improvement of the infrastructure such as, um, bridges. So that, that avenue is, is being pursued as we speak.
We can bring her to, we can bring her to a work session.
That's an idea too.
All right.
Um, Commissioner DeSantis, anything you want to add on that?
I'll get in touch with everybody and see if that date works.
Okay, so that would be March twenty-second at six o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, when we were talking about this, I had mentioned that there's gonna be funds available for infrastructure, federal funds. I remember bringing that up and I, I hope it comes in fructation. But it looks like they're gonna put some money in for bridges and stuff, so hopefully we can get some money somewhere. Thank you.
Councilman Surlick, you're absolutely right. You did mention that at one of the prior, uh, council meetings, and we thank you for that.
I'm, I'm actually looking forward to hearing Ms. Minor, uh, Ms. Minor's input because, uh, federal funds, if there was such a thing as the cavalry coming over the hill, it's not federal funds, because that takes years. So I like to hear her input. So, uh, but I guess we'll lay it all out on the twenty-second um, and, and see where we go from there. So I appreciate everyone, uh, working on that and putting it together.
All right. So before we move forward, I'll make the context on these. So you, you, this work session will involve the council, the Director of Development, the, uh, Director, uh, Public, Commissioner of Public Works, uh, the Controller, the engineers, you want, you want to try to get Connie Minor there too?
That's correct, yeah.
Anybody else that you should reach out to?
Uh, if I can think of it, I'll text you tomorrow, Jeff, or later. I, I, I can't think of anybody else that should have the whole shebang, but I would also like for, uh, Clark Patterson Lee to have a, a breakdown of just exactly what the damage is to that bridge. I mean, it is a border bridge between the First and Second Ward. Uh, it is a water bridge, so I'd like to know, uh, the, the impact uh, that's happened and, uh, and all costs available, uh, projected and et cetera. So, um, that's all I could think of right now. If I could think of more, or if anyone else could think of any more.
Uh, the mayor, how about the mayor?
She, well, she totally doesn't sit through those, but if she'd like to, that's fine. Um.
No, I understand that, but, I mean, so I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, listen, if she wants to sit there, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's, it's okay, but that's what the department is for. Um, but I will, uh, if, but again, if anyone else could think of anyone else who should be there, by all means, I want as much information as possible. So when we make a decision, uh, it's the most educated decision we can make.
I think Councilman Samansky can lead on that. Councilman Surlick?
Yes, uh, Councilman Samansky, get, what about, you mentioned that the other two bridges were questionable years ago.
Uh, they were minorly addressed. That was, there's a few of them on Electric that were, uh, they, they were, reworked a bit. Uh, there was one on, uh, Wood Street that was also worked, uh, had, had some work done to it. Um, but if there is any state reports of other bridges within the city, uh, minus the Johnson Street Bridge, um, which has been officially decommissioned by the state years ago, and, you know, if we have any other reports, uh, I'd like to see it all too. But that one, because that bridge has been red flagged and closed for the winter, I'm sure it's no easy task for our plow drivers e- either, but I'm, I'm getting, uh, conversations from the residents. Um, I'd rather address it now before it gets too far away and then the damage becomes, uh, unreparable or un, uh, financially, uh, unadvisable to, to pursue. So I'd rather nip it in the bud now if we can, but we'll get all the answers out on the twenty-second.
And, and lastly, I just want you to know, uh, with the public hearing scheduled for six thirty, you know, it's a half hour that you're allowing, allotting for this?
It's just a work session. So we're, if we need to have another work session, we can call for one.
Okay.
Yeah. But I appreciate the reminder, Jeff. Thanks.
All right, so.
That's all I have for old business.
We are, we are scheduled for then, uh, we will be the twenty-second, the same day as the public hearing for six PM. Um, uh, just so everyone knows, the governor did extend the executive order, uh, where we are to continue with the remote Zoom format that we're currently in. So, uh, I don't know. It will still be in effect at that time, but right now.
Well, how, how far did he extend it to, Jeff?
Fifteenth of March.
Okay.
Right now, but he does this every couple of weeks, so we'll know well in advance whether or not we're good.